Good evening. The City of Boston's zoning board for appeal subcommittee for May 19, 2020 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until July 15, 2022. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep their video on when presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time of commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Click yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Again, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand and star six to unmute yourself. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their names and address first, and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Just quickly, I see Mr. Fortune as secretary and Mr. Ehrlich here as architect.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Good evening. So let's go ahead, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call any deferrals or withdrawals for tonight's meeting. If you can give me the address if you are deferring or withdrawing. Hearing now, call the first case, calling case BOA 1266216134, Wordsworth Street. This is adding more room. This is adding more room. The violation is Article 27G. This is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Diane Miller, and I am with Miller Design. I'm the architect. My address is 80 Clark Street, Belmont. And also here with me tonight are Chris and Dana Griswold. Would you like them to introduce themselves at this point?
No, please go ahead and tell us what is proposed.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So they own a small, single-family home. It is at the corner of Wordsworth and Horace. Their home has currently a footprint of only 532 square feet. On the basement level, if you scroll back up, there we go. So this is the existing basement level. They often enter through that mechanical storage room, because this is where their main living spaces are. So they've got their living room and their kitchen and the only bathroom on this level, although this is the basement level. And then one story up from here, if you scroll to the next sheet. This is the first floor, has a living room and a bedroom. And then on the next sheet, you see the attic space, which has two small rooms under the eaves. The interior stair to get from the basement to the first floor and also up to the attic space is rather treacherous. So that's one of the things that we are looking to correct. So basically, what we would like to do is to build a side addition on the right side of this. So if you want to keep going to the next, I think the next sheet shows the elevations. You can see the basement door there, and then the stairs up to that first level living room door. So we are going to be putting a side addition on the right of that. And if you look at the next sheet, that has the proposed basement floor plan. So with the new addition, we would like to correct the entry so that when they walk into the main living area, which is on this floor, that they have a little foyer instead of walking in through the mechanical storage space, which is an unfinished space. And then they also would like to add that playroom there. They have three young children, and so they need a little bit more living space for their family and also a little bit more of a connection to their yard, which is something that's very important to them, to be able to be in the kitchen and/or in the playroom and to be able to look out and see the kids playing in the yard. We are also proposing that stair on the back of the playroom that would meet code. So that would become the primary stair up to the second floor. We would be leaving the current stair because it also provides access up to the attic. So we're just going to leave that one in place, but add this new one that would meet code. So we are here tonight for three reasons. One is the FAR, second is the side yard.
I'm sorry, can you please tell us, so it's a one-story addition? It's not a, it doesn't go up to the upper two floors, then?
The addition is on the basement level and on the first level. It does not include the attic level.
Okay, can we see what the first level looks like, please?
Sure, that is the, what you were just looking at was the basement level. Do you want to look at the elevations or the plans?
No, please, go to the next page so we can see what that looks like.
Okay, there we go. So that's the first floor that has currently a living room and a bedroom on the left side. And then up here, we are proposing an additional bedroom and a bathroom. So that would be the second bath for the house.
Okay.
Okay.
And so the total new square footage is about 600 square feet?
Correct. It's 291 square feet on the basement level and 337 square feet on this level.
Okay, and what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Oh, that is a question I need to check on my, because I don't remember. It is 73 in the basement.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The plans are fine. The basement level is in fact a garden level. It's not, it's not mostly below grade, so no issues there. It would have been nice if the drawings had had a plot plan, because it's a little hard, given that there's rear yard and side yard setbacks. It would have been nice to have seen them, how they laid out in the lot. But this is a relatively straightforward proposal.
So can you please tell us what the rear and side yard, especially side yard, what's required and what impact this proposal will have, Ms. Miller?
Of course. So the side yard, in terms of orientation on this plan that we're looking at right now, is at the top of the drawing, so between the stair and that dashed line. And currently, there is two and a half, I'm sorry, the setback requirement is 2.5. Currently, they have 1.8. And the intention is to just align with the existing. So we would be maintaining that 1.8 that is the current condition. And then in terms of the rear yard, that would be on the right side. So the distance from the playroom to the far right portion of that grass hatch pattern. And so currently, the house has 23.2 feet from the house to that property line, and we are proposing a nine-foot addition. And so with that extra nine feet, that would bring our rear yard setback to 14.2. I do think it's worth noting that that hatch shows, and there's a label on there, that the minimum usable open space at 300 square feet, and we actually have about 500 square feet if you include all of this space.
Yeah, thank you. So the question then becomes, with that side yard, if you're 1.8, 1 foot 8, what's the distance between your property line and the abutting property owner's wall or windows or whatever is on that side?
That, I do not have that information. I have a plot plan here that I was not aware that that wasn't part of your package, but the plot plan does not show the neighboring property.
Okay. Okay, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board, some background information on the community process. Our office hosted a Butters meeting for this project on March 3rd. Noah Butters attended the meeting. The applicant went on to present to the Harborview Neighborhood Association, where they received full support. The proposal was very well received by the civic that was excited to see families staying in the neighborhood. With that, we turn it back to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have that letter that Connor Newman spoke of, the Harborview.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Jessica?
Sorry, yep, I have no raised hands at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Following the next case, calling BOA 1310017223, Commonwealth Avenue. This is a change of act from a five-unit dwelling unit to a one-unit to include 870 square-foot roof deck, garage for two proposed vehicles, and complete interior renovation. A proposed off-street parking in the rear rear yard is under a separate permit. The violation is Article 16, Section 8, restricted roof structure district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small. Business address office in Wooddopson Road, Grandtree, Mass. I'm sure we're here today seeking relief to change the legal occupancy of the building from a five residential unit building to a one-family dwelling. A zoning sub-district is H365. A lot size is 3,238 square feet. And our violation is restricted roof structure.
So before we proceed, counselor, has this property already been sold? Or is it in ownership already?
It is in ownership already.
Okay, so it's going, it's proposed to be owner-occupied?
Owner-occupied, one-family dwelling. That's correct.
Okay. The, I know that this is just essentially a roof deck, but there was no groundwater protection overlay district cited on this?
Not at all.
Okay, okay. So go ahead, tell us what's being proposed.
Okay, so again.
If I could, Madam Chair, I think there's a issue here, because the restricted article, I looked this up, I'm actually looking at it now. Section 168 restricted roof structure only applies to the south end and the back and north end, and does not apply to the back bay. So I'm not sure whether this was incorrectly cited.
Oh, no, we've seen a lot of roof decks in the back bay.
I'm looking at.
I don't know what it's cited under, so, okay. Sorry, Ms. Counselor.
Okay, just as we proceed, just wanted everybody to know that we do have a letter in the file from the Back Bay Architectural Commission. We went before them, and they approved the project. And we also went to Sue Prindo and NAB, the Architecture Committee, and they supported the project as well.
So it's not visible from the street?
No. In fact, Madam Chair, it is setback 17 feet from the front and 16 feet from the back. So it's in the center of the building. Yeah, it's 870 square feet.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, it's a very ambitious renovation, and initially called for a swimming pool on the roof. That's, I guess, been eliminated. There is a large headhouse, which presumably is not visible from the roof. But again, this is, this is an architectural, this is for the back bay folks to decide. I think the headhouse is too big, but I don't really think that's in the purview of the, our board, to be honest with you. And again, I think it was cited incorrectly. And I checked with the BPDA on that, and they agree.
So is that an existing headhouse or a proposed headhouse, counselor?
Proposed headhouse.
And there's also, there's also an internal elevator. So there's an elevator override on top of the roof as well.
Again, all of that was approved, Madam Chair, by the BPDA. I know it's in the father of the letters in the file.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, we're having video problems on my end, just so you know.
No, I noticed that you had changed your look.
We're working on that, but we do have the letter that Counselor is talking about.
Okay. You know, it's interesting that the BPDA recommendation, Mr. Ehrlich, lists the violation as G-Cod applicability.
That's why I checked on this, and I spoke to Mr. Hampton, and he said that it was, he thinks that it was cited in error because the restricted roof structure district only applies to the south end and the north end. So that's, so he just, he made the assumption that there must be a G-Cod violation. But if Mr. Small says there isn't, I don't know if we have any roles in this case, because I think it goes for the Architectural Commission.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoken this as well. I don't know if you want his comments right now, or do you want to continue?
Yes, please go ahead.
So regarding 223 Commonwealth Avenue is okay, but he would like to see the width of the parking area increased from seven feet to 10 feet to improve the access and the egress. He also says there should be an audio and visual alarm to warn pedestrians of oncoming vehicles.
Okay, so counselor, the, okay, so for me, it feels like there are a lot of odds and ends pieces, because, you know, we usually like to see a complete project, because it looks like the application says proposed off-street parking in rear yard is under separate permit. Is that a permit that the applicant is supposed to come to this board for?
No, that's a use supremacist.
The use supremacist.
Yep, there's a parking in the rear, proposing parking in the rear of the property. And that, and that's a butts, public alley 426.
Okay. Okay, so let's get testimony. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Molly Griffin from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board's judgment. We did host an Butters meeting on March 8th of this year, where the applicant was able to answer some questions by a few neighbors who attended, and they did meet with the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay's Architectural Committee and received their support. Again, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Thank you.
Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, again, I'll make a motion to approve, even though I don't think we really have a role in this. I would like to see the headhouse smaller, but I think we would be overridden by the Architectural Commission. So I'll just make a motion to approve.
Okay, are you in support?
I'm going to second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good evening.
You too. Calling next case, calling BOA 12806379 Dennison Street. This is a change of act from existing one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. The violation is Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking and loading is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Is there anybody on for 9 Dennison Street?
They may be on. Let me just pull up the agenda again. There were two people who didn't check in. One second. Stephanie, I don't see the name of the applicant.
We can come back, we can come back to it. Go to the next case, calling BOA 1270602, 10 Johnston Road. This is the finished portion of the basement, accommodate and office and recreational space for unit two. The violation is Article 60, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 60, Section 9, the number of habitable stories has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this applicant is on. Trevor, you can mute yourself. Trevor sent a request to unmute you. Okay.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, this is Trevor Blake representing Alexia Martin. He has this two-family house on Johnson Street. He has a large family and young children. And of course, it's a very busy street on 10 Johnston Road. He'd like to create a space in the basement to allow his kids to play and for him also to have an office so that he can oversee his kids while he's there. It will not cause any harm to the neighborhood. It will add a little bit of recreational space for his family. And I beseech the board to approve his request.
So can you tell us what page we should be looking at to see how the second unit is directly connected to the basement space? And also, we need to figure out if the utilities are separate and what the floor-to-ceiling height is in the basement?
The floor-to-ceiling height in the basement is eight feet, eight feet two inches. There's a back stairs. Let me see if I can locate that. I'm having a little bit of difficulty.
Madam Chair, the back stairs bypass the first floor. They go directly from the second unit to the basement.
So the plans that are up there now, it's a set of stairs on the right-hand side? Okay, okay. And what is the square footage of that basement space?
One moment, I'll tell you.
And Mr. Ehrlich? Mr. Ehrlich, there's kind of a G-shaped structure in the middle of the drawing, or a C-shaped structure? What is that?
That's partitions.
I see, okay.
We're trying to partition the area so that the utility and/or the storage space in the basement is excluded from the recreational and office area.
Yeah, the electrical panel and the gas meters are shown at the bottom of the floor plan.
Okay, and then right next to finished basement, there's a C-shaped structure, and that, those are partitions?
I assume that's a closet of some kind, but yes, I mean, it doesn't say what it is, they're partitioned.
Okay. Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes, Madam, I want to people to hear from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. First of all, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, I want to people to hear from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant had an Butters meeting run by the Mayor's Office on February 16th, where the requests and concerns were satisfactorily addressed and support was shown. There was also one Butters as well as another Butters that was a representative for the neighborhood association in the area, which is the Harvard Blue Circle Neighborhood Association. They showed support as well as saw the proposal okay to move forward without coming before the association for their monthly meeting. The applicant also sent in a support petition that should be on file with the board with about 12 names with the Butters who aren't supportive of the proposal at this time. But the information, the Mayor's Office would like to go to defer to the judgment of the board on this matter. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
So it sounds to me like, you know, we usually approve projects that are directly connected, like floor-to-floor. Whereas this one has, there's a second floor unit to the basement. But I do think this has merit. But the proviso that may be suitable is that there be no bedrooms in the basement, that it doesn't involve evolve into sleeping space down there.
I assure you, it will not.
Yes, we, yes, but you know, our relief goes with the building and not with the applicant. So we do need to make sure that our proviso is very clear, you know, to include that. So Mr. Ehrlich, is that okay with you?
Yeah, no, that makes sense. You want me to make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve with a proviso that the basement unit not included bedroom.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 127942116, Hopkins Street. This is going to convert a current one-family to a two-family. The violation is Article 60, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the number of habitable stories has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Camille is on as well. One second. Camille, I sent a request to unmute you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Camille, you're on mute again.
Okay, is it unmuted?
Yeah, you're all set. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So our architect, Charles Bradley, is actually on the phone.
Please, can you put your name and address on the record? And whoever's going to speak to describe the project, please also put your name and address on the project, on the record, okay?
Yep, my name is Camille Perry, and I'm here with my husband Shane Reed. We're both owners of the property. Property address is 16 Hopkins Street in Dorchester, Mass. And Charles Bradley is our architect, and he is also on the phone that will be representing us for the hearing.
Mr. Bradley, do you want to put your name and address on the record and then tell us what's being proposed?
He's on his, I think he's on mute, but go, Mr. Bradley, can you hear us? You're on mute. Okay, there you go.
All right, yes. What we're doing basically, excuse me, is converting the, it's a one-family, we're running it to a two-family. What the, what the, what are you doing?
Mr. Bradley, a couple of things. If you could put your address on the record, and you're breaking up, so I don't know if there's something, if there's an issue with your audio.
Where am I supposed to put my name?
Just for the record, so verbally, put your name and address on the record, because this is taped.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Charles Bradley. And I'm the architect for 16 Hopkins Street in Dorchester.
Okay.
The firm name is The Arch Professional Group Incorporated.
Okay, so you proposed, the proposal is to, is it to add a story to help create that second unit?
No, no, we're not doing, we're not adding any story. We're just providing records into the basement, which is going to be unit one. So the first floor will be unit one. And the existing second floor in the attic, existing attic will be unit two.
Okay, so just so that you know, this board is not keen on having livable space in the basement. No bedrooms in the basement. So can you tell us, you know, what the floor-to-ceiling height is? Is it basement or is it a garden unit? Talk us through it.
A living room and, uh, playroom, a family room, down in the bathroom, in the laundry room. Will be any bedrooms down in that basement.
No bedrooms in the basement?
No, no.
Okay, so, so tell us what happens on the first floor.
On the first floor. The first floor, you come the vestibule, as soon as you come in, you'll move vestibule, you walk straight through that door, that will take you into unit one, which is the, uh, which will be the, uh, one of the floors, that and the basement will be unit one. And you take the stairs up to the second floor, which will take you to unit two.
And what's the, what's the square footage of the second unit?
I don't have that number. I don't have that number handy, square footage hasn't changed, I don't know that much.
Um, and what, I'm sorry, if you, uh, did you tell us the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement? And did you tell us if the utilities are separate?
Utilities are separate, the ceiling height is seven point four four feet in the basement.
Okay. Um, Mr. Olick.
Lower the floor, they want to lower the floor as well.
Mr. Olick, can you help with this, please?
Yeah, um, the living room in the basement is shown in seven four four, as the, as the architect says, and the room next to it, which is unspecified, but I gather is a playroom or the family room or whatever, is seven point three one five, so, in a two-family, it has to be minimum seven feet, so that's okay. The utilities are separate. And the house is somewhat elevated so that the bottom floor is, is not underground, um, you know, great, the, much of it is above grade, so that's not really an issue, and I think as long as there's a proviso about no bedrooms in the basement, I think we're okay.
Okay, um, any sense on what the size of that proposed second unit is?
Yeah, I was trying to get that answer for you. The plans don't have those, don't show those dimensions and, um, yeah, I mean, they're sufficiently sized, but, but these are not, it's not a microunit, let's put it that way.
Okay, okay. Mr. Bradley, anything you want to add?
Uh, no, we're just, uh, we're basically, we made a point of trying to, uh, not add anything to the building, I mean, we'll start, uh, basically what's there is what's there, just adding a new entrance, which is basically lining up with the existing porch, uh, to the basement. Right now it's a bulkhead, we're making an actual door to enter.
Okay.
Figure ourselves aside to the other.
Is, um, anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Uh, yes, uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dante Peoples from the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. The applicant met with the, met with the, uh, redefining our community neighborhood association on February seventeenth, and had an abutters meeting run by the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, where questions and concerns were satisfactorily addressed and support was shown. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board for your judgment on this matter. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment, thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion for simple approval, the, the BPDA recommendation is for design review, but there's really virtually nothing on, I mean, it's just a new entrance, uh, so I'm gonna make a motion for simple approval.
Can we have no bedrooms in the basement?
Yes, uh, and a proviso, yes, thank you, and a proviso of no bedrooms in the basement.
I'll second that motion.
I too, I'm in support, so you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one two eight zero four nine four thirty-eight Summer Street. This is to build up the back of the house, two levels, first floor and second floor, kitchen, bathroom, and two bedrooms. New electric, new plumbing. One family, they like to convert it to a two-family. The violation is Article sixty-nine, section nine, insufficient side yard setback, second floor stair platform, Article sixty-nine, section eight, a two-family dwelling is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
If you're on for this call, can you raise your hand? This person didn't check in with me earlier, so I'm not sure who.
We can come back, Jessica, I'll come back for them. Calling the next case, calling DOA one two six three two one seven nine ninety-six to nine ninety-eight River Street. This is a cop, a carport with cement slab, the violation is Article sixty-eight, section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Lincoln is on, um, Lincoln, I sent a request to unmute you, can you hear us? Lincoln, can you unmute yourself?
Lincoln Ralph, nine ninety-six River Street, we are opposing, um, opposing, um, for a carport and a car, a carport slab.
So it's not a garage, it's just a slab that you're proposing?
Yes, and, and it, it, the, the, there's a, there's a company that's gonna come in and put up the carport. But, um, we have to have the foundation, so we have that all, um, by the architect, Richard, Richard Asment.
Um, I'm having video problems, for some reason I cannot see the screen. And so, um, I'm kind of a little bit blind on this, so, um, let's see, um, is there any sense on what this, the, the siding is or the way the carport is proposed to look? Um, hold on, Mr. Olick?
Uh, no, all we have are two block plans, one without the carport and one with, uh, with the, the carport, there's no rendering of the, of what the carport looks like.
We, we, we submit it. We submit all that to the city. It's supposed to be a thirty by, thirty by twenty-four, uh, carport.
Yes.
Can you, can, to the applicant, can you just, since we don't have the, the drawing, uh, the rendering, can you just tell us, what, is it like this four columns with a roof, or I mean, what, what, what does it look like?
Well, it's a slab with, uh, with a slab with, um, a, a, a roof, metal, 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 metal top, um, metal siding, and, and a, on a door, on a garage door, a side door and a garage door.
Okay, so it's, so it's enclosed, it's not open air?
It's not open, no.
And is it connected to the, will it be connected to the house in any way?
No, ma'am.
No, it's separate.
And what were the violations, um, Mr. Olick? Or Mr. Ford?
The violations are rear yard insufficient. I, I mean, it's, it's sixteen feet from, uh, from the, from the back lot line.
Okay, and, and, and it's, so I'm assuming that this carport is prefabbed then?
Yes.
It is. Okay.
I do have one question for the applicant. You seem to have plenty of room alongside of the house for the, about twelve feet for the cars to go by, except for one area where there's a stairwell on the side of the house. Do you know what the width of the driveway is at that point?
Eight feet. Eight, 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 eight or nine feet.
All right, so it'll just barely get by, but the, the rest of it is, is twelve feet, so that's fine.
The reason why we want this, because the street is getting too busy, and we want to take some of the car off of the street, because my car got hit there a couple of times, and I'm people hit the car, break off the mirror and keep going, so I'm trying to avoid that, plus I have a tenant that has.
So how, so how many cars will be parked in the carport?
Two, and so then I'll have two access space, so for, uh, for the tenant, and if I have a, a guest come by, they will have a spot also.
Okay, and you already, this drawings don't show, do you already have a curb cut?
Yes, I do.
There's an existing one?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
And, okay, and, um, have you been, okay, go, okay, got it, okay. What was the BPDA's recommendation on this? Johnston Hopkins approval with proviso, okay. No, this is River Street. Okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, this is, um, and members of the board, this is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. I hosted an abutters meeting for this on December eighth. And the applicants completed the entire community process notifying the abutters. They also were informed to notify the East River Street Neighborhood Association. We have no letters of support or opposition for this proposal, so we'd like to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands, thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, and I guess, um, I guess design review, just because we can't see it, so.
Exactly, that's a good idea.
I would second that motion.
I too, I'm in support, so you're all set with that proviso.
Thank you very.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one two eight one three eight two twenty-seven Whitmore Street. This is construction of a sunroom addition, the violation Article fifty-six, section eight, dimensional regulation, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, uh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board for entertaining this proposal. My name is Maisha Minter Jordan, I'm the owner of twenty-seven Whitmore Street. My husband Larry Jordan Jr. is also on the line.
So tell us what you're proposing to do?
Yes, ma'am, uh, the proposed project is to add a sunroom to the side of our home, it's approximately four hundred square feet. And we are adding that sermon in order to add additional daylight into our home. We have a, a beautiful old Victorian that doesn't get very much sunlight. I'm also, um, have been working at home since the pandemic, so would like to have this as a workspace for myself. Um, and we, uh, have put the proposal forward in, with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, um, and did receive, um, a unanimous vote in support of that. We also had a number of our neighbors, uh, participate in that meeting, uh, particularly the principal abutter, who voiced the vigorous support for our project.
How are the plans, uh, your, because your office is in Charlestown, right?
Yeah, my, my, my work, my, my employer's office is in Charlestown, we've not been in the office since the, since the pandemic. But, so I am effectively working from home at the present time.
Um, Mark, Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Um, it's a very nice, uh, addition, it's a sunroof with a lot of glass and light. Don't know how much work you'll get from home if there's a wet bar in it, but but that, but that, that's your, that's your call, it, it, it's, it's very nice.
Okay, is, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Jake Lacy from the Office of Neighborhood Services. As the applicant Maisha mentioned, um, on March fifteenth, uh, the applicant went in front of the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council and received a unanimous vote of support. And all, as also mentioned, the director abutters at twenty-three Whitmore Street also, um, provided their full support as well. We received no letters of opposition, and at this time, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion.
I too, I'm in support, so you're all set, good luck with that proviso.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling DOA one two eight five six seven five fifteen Montville Street. This is add an additional parking space to the existing driveway and widen the existing curb. Violation Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
I tell, um, live at fifteen Brownson Terrace in Jamaica Plain, I'm here on behalf of the owner of the house, Morgan Wells, and, uh, we're looking for, uh, one variance here, there's an existing driveway, I'm sorry, existing curb cut. Morgan, uh, will speak to what he wants to do in this, uh, what she wants to do in a second. But I'm here, uh, as a favor, uh, Morgan, uh, and I have known each other for twenty-five years.
Okay, so can we, you know, we, we love that you're here in support, but please, can we hear about the proposal if you don't mind?
Yes, we're, um, well, I'll let Morgan tell you, uh, a little bit about herself and then what she wants to do.
So Morgan, can you please go ahead and tell us what you're proposing?
Yes, uh, I have a two-family house, I've lived there for thirty-three years, and I have one parking space in a curb cut, and I need a second parking space for my tenants.
So this is, um, so you're at the corner of Montville and Iona. This, did this one just get a rehab?
It's, uh, been in process, the, uh, rehab is, uh, not, or is it the inside of the house, not on the outside of the house? There was a property right next to mine at nineteen Iona, and that was a major rehab.
So let me ask you, um, where is the proposed driveway, is it on Montville or Iona?
It's on Iona.
It's on Iona?
Yes.
Oh, I see, okay, so you're proposing them as side by side?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there parking on that side of the street on Iona?
Well, there's a curb cut, at present time, it's always been there, and so no one can park there anyway, and there is, um, legal parking on all of Iona Street, yes.
Okay, so you will, so you are proposing to maintain the curb cut at seven point six and not extend it?
No, it's, uh, proposing to extend it so that the second, uh, car can get entrance and exit from the space without going over the curb.
Okay, but that, that might create a problem because that eliminates another spot from the street.
Well, actually, the, uh, the curb cut only has to be widened by about, I think it's approximately like five or five feet, and.
Exactly, so that's about the, the, li- little more than that, and you're, you have another parking spot. So, because I'm just actually looking at it on, um, Google Maps here.
Well, it's actually not going to take away any of the existing.
Okay, um, Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Well, uh, so this is unfortunate, this is a corner lot, which complicates it, because obviously not front parking, since he addresses Montville, and, and side parking, but if you were looking at it from the Iona perspective, it is front yard parking. You know, so I don't know how, how, what, what we think about that, but I don't think there's any need to, uh, increase the curb cuts to fourteen feet, it's now, I gather, it's seven foot six, well, I'm not sure what the existing is.
Mr. Olick, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. D'Amico has spoken, I'd like to put his.
Yeah, well, this, uh, I mean, what, what is, uh, what does Bob have to say about this?
So regarding fifteen Montville, wood twenty is okay, since the parking is not in the front yard, there is ample space for maneuverability from a BPD perspective.
Hang on, there's ample space with the existing curb cut or with the expanded curb cut?
From what I'm gathering on his comments, it sounds like there's, uh, there is ample space for maneuverability from the, from his perspective.
Yeah, I think he's talking about the parking spaces versus the curb cut.
Yeah, he doesn't mention anything about curb cuts.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I would want to see the curb cut reduced from, and not, not be fourteen, and, and, you know, kind of the conventional ten to twelve, if it's centered, both cars should be able to get out.
Yes, exactly, and, um, and that street's a fairly busy street. I mean, I mean, it's fairly frequently occupied for on-street parking. Okay, um, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board, uh, some background information on the community process. Through the ONS-led process, we heard from a number of neighbors, uh, most neighbors were in favor of this project. Uh, some have raised concerns regarding runoff from driveway as it pitches towards the street, um, and also other concerns about potential noise, um, from the pavers. Uh, another neighbor expressed that they wanted to see a proviso for a fence, um, installed. And then, uh, lastly, uh, we received one letter of support for this proposal, and the applicant reached out to the LANA Neighborhood Association.
That they reach out to Lana? Interesting. So, um, let me just see if I, if I can think of anything, okay, and, uh, sorry, Mr. Newman. And sorry, Mr. Newman, when they talked about a fence, did they talk, was that, I assume it's for the rear or side yard?
I believe it's the side yard. The applicant might be able to speak to that.
Yes, the fence, I agreed to put up a fence between the nineteen Iona Street property, which would be the side of their property, which would be the rear of my fifteen Montvale Street property.
Okay, Gary, Gary, are you the applicant on this?
No, it's Morgan owns the house and she's owned the house for thirty-three years.
I'm sorry, Gary, because I was having technical difficulties, so got it, okay. Okay, um, okay, we heard, anybody else to speak on this matter?
No raised hands.
Thank you, Mr. Passer. May I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve with a proviso that the curb cut not exceed the standard ten to twelve feet.
And that we need BPTD and BPDA review to make sure that happens?
Sure.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 126195859 Dunboy Street. This is extension of living, of living space, renovation of a two-family, and in addition, an extended living space into the attic. The violation is Article nine, section one, extension of non-conforming use. Article fifty-one, section nine, insufficient side yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Falkenstein, and my address, my office address is 7 Kent Street in Brookline.
So are you the, do you live in this property?
No, I'm the applicant for, and the architect of record.
So is this owner occupied?
This is not an owner occupied, it, it currently, it previously was owner occupied. This property is being renovated, and the intent is to sell them as condominiums.
Okay, I, I'd just like to have those kind of vacant properties heard at the full board so that there, there is sunshine on projects like this, okay? So may I have a motion for deferral to the full board?
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
I'm in support. What date?
How far do we want to go for this one?
Madam Chair, how far would you like to go with this one?
Doesn't matter to me.
I guess we could hear.
Theoretically, do the full hearing next Tuesday.
We can do that.
Yep, what's the date on that? May twenty-fourth.
We can do May twenty-fourth at eleven-thirty.
If you could just let me check my calendar for one second.
Sure.
May twenty-fourth, at what time is that?
Eleven-thirty, so you're probably looking at, if we're, if we're on the schedule, we're looking probably at one o'clock or one-thirty, but don't hold me to that, but make sure you're on by eleven-thirty if you are able to do that.
Okay, sure, I can do that.
Okay, so we'll do the twenty-third, which is next Tuesday at eleven-thirty. Twenty-fourth, I'm sorry, twenty-fourth.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, calling the next case. Calling BOA 127721343 Tast Street. This is a change of occupancy from a one-family to a two-family with new addition. The violation is Article sixty-nine, section nine, usable open space is insufficient, and Article sixty-nine, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jolene Collins. I'm the license contractor, and I'm representing Bishop Glenn Prosper as well as Mrs. Colleen Prosper and thirty, who are located at forty-three Pier Street, High Park, Massachusetts. We're coming up before the board seeking relief for two violations that are referenced in BOA 1277213. The two violations that we have actually have come from five that we had in our revise, after revising the proposed plans, excuse me. So we, we worked with the client as well as the architect to revise these proposed drawings that you see in front of you today. And we also submitted it to the ISD Office Zoning Board of Appeal where they were able to essentially just reduce the amount of violations to two violations.
So that's good news. So tell us, tell us how, describe to the, to us how this is going to change from a one to a two.
Um, so if we look at, and I'm sorry, if you can scroll to, let me actually open it here so I can actually scroll. If you scroll to page six and seven, you're going to see the proposed basement floor plan up to the proposed attic level. And what we decided to do in order to reduce, especially the rear yard setback as we were revising, was we decided to actually take a portion of the current home and add it into unit two so that we could create a separate space. So this is reflected on the first floor plan of the revised proposed drawings where you see the bedroom, the master bedroom with the bathroom. That is actually a part of the existing home. So we are just going to be taking some of the space from the existing home and then building out forty-five-foot addition from the, the home, excuse me.
And is it a two-story addition?
This is going to be a two-story addition with an attic available for utilities and additional storage, should they want to use the pull-down.
Okay, so let's see, so the height, so the side yard, so tell us what the rear yard is? What, what it's required and what's being proposed?
Okay, so right now, for the rear yard setback, we have a rear yard depth, the minimum is forty feet, and we actually are, excuse me. So we have fifty-six point six feet in the rear. So we have more than that twenty, twenty-foot setback, which I believe is the, is the minimum setback.
Okay, uh, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Plans are okay. This is a pretty decent-sized addition. My only question for the architect is the basement unit two, the floor plan, proposed floor plan, what is that space intended for? It just says basement on it.
Yeah, so that is actually going to be an unfinished space right now, so that's going to just be storage or whatever they'd like.
That's fine.
It does have the water heater back down there as well.
Yep, 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 the plans are okay.
Um, so like, this is reduced from a far, a far bigger proposal, a far longer proposal.
That's why it's a rediscussion?
Yes, yes, um, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I held in a Butters meeting for this proposal on February third. They received support from the Butters, and they also received a letter of support from the High Park Central River Neighborhood Group, which has been sent to the board. They also have signatures of support. At this time, we'd like to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have those letters as well.
Thank you. May we, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that proviso.
Thank you so much, board and Madam Chairman. Have a great night.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna go back to two cases I called earlier. Is Dennison Street on? Or is Summer Street on?
Good evening, yes, I'm here.
What's your address, ma'am? Sorry, what's your address? Okay, hold on two seconds. Yep, I'm gonna call it back into the record. For the record, calling BOA 128049438 Summer Street. This is the buildup at the back of the house, two levels, first floor, second floor, kitchen, bathroom, two bedrooms. That is now a one-family. They would like to convert to a two-family. The violation is Article sixty-nine, section nine, insufficient side yard second, setback, second-floor stair platform. And Article sixty-nine, section eight, two-family dwelling is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Victorina Erezari, and it's thirty-eight Summer Street, High Park, zero to one three six.
So tell us what you're proposing to do?
Hi, yes, so we're here. We were looking to get relief from the board. Basically, I want, I'm converting the house to a two-family because I'm gonna have my daughter and my granddaughters move in. And I realized that I have this space, and we're just seeing if we had a meeting with the neighborhood.
And please, while, while you have, and while we have the drawings up, explain to us what, what you're proposing to do, okay, so we can understand and tell us what drawings we should be looking at so we can understand, okay?
Okay, so I wasn't familiar, so I'm gonna try my best because I wasn't sure if I was gonna have to speak, that wasn't communicated, but I'll try to do my best, I think. So what you have, do you have the drawing that has the plan of what we're, let me see what drawing you have up? Because I don't know, I don't have the same one in front of me. Do you have any other drawings? So the two, okay, so the two bedrooms are for my two granddaughters. And the other bedroom is for their mom, my, 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 my daughter. Do you see that in the drawings?
You know, the, the drawings are okay in terms of the issues that we are concerned about. There doesn't appear to be any living space in the basement, is that correct?
No, the basement just has like the water heaters and just storage.
And Mr. Olick, second means of egress, and how big are each units, each of the units?
They're, they're not dimensioned, so I can't answer that, but again, they don't look like my, they're not micro units, that's for sure. And there appears to be the appropriate, yes, there's, there's, there's two means of egress. I don't think there are any code issues. I don't think this is, this is not a very complicated.
And it looks like there's a rear addition going in?
Yeah.
Yeah, two-floor addition, okay. Okay, dimensional regulations, does that mean rear yard? It probably means rear, Summer Street side yard setback. Okay, so you're comfortable with it, with it, Mr. Olick?
Yeah, the drawings are not great, but I mean, again, it's just not an extremely complicated project, so it's okay.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Danielle Fonseca, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicants for thirty-eight Summer Street completed the community process. They notified all the Butters, and I hosted the community meeting on March eighth. In addition, they also attended the Gru Park Neighborhood Association meeting on April fourth, where there were no members of the association who were opposed to the proposal. They received letters of support, which have also been sent to the board, and at this time, we'd like to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion as well.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that proviso.
Madam Ambassador, is Dennison Street on? Do you see the name?
I do not. Are any of the liaisons on that are familiar with who that, I know Jashawn's on. Do you, do you know if the applicant is here for that, Jashawn? Yeah, I don't have any raised hands.
Okay, I'm gonna call it into the record, Madam Chair. Calling BOA 12806379 Dennison Street. I'm gonna make a motion to deny without prejudice.
I'll second that.
I too am in support, so the motion carries. Meeting is now adjourned. We'll see everybody on Tuesday. Have a great weekend.
Good night.